Calling to order the Select Board meeting for May 28, 2024. We're all here. Good afternoon. First order of business is public comment period. Is Miles? Anyone online or anyone requesting?
We don't have anyone raising their hand at this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay. But in the room we have Scott Silverman. Come on up. Mr. Silverman has you have three minutes. Just your line. That's great.
Hasn't started yet.
No.
Start with your name and address.
Okay. My name is Scott Silverman. My address is 40 Brewster Drive in Needham. Okay. I'm a longtime Needham resident. Moved here in 73. And have been at my house at 40 Brewster Drive since 1998. The project that I think is going to be discussed today, or at least part of it, impacts my property at 40 Brewster Drive. And there was a meeting where Shane and Tyler, who both work for the town, came and discussed what was going to occur. I think the biggest impact is to our property, where there's going to be some significant land added to adjacent to our property. And we've kind of discussed what that's going to look like and how it will be handled. And have heard back from Tyler that the town doesn't necessarily have the capacity to maintain that land. And so we've discussed some alternatives. And I'm waiting to hear back as to how it's going to be handled. So I'm anxious to see what and hear what gets presented to the Select Committee and to see how it goes down. My wife, just by way of information, when we first got the notice about these, I must be getting close to my three minutes, but the improvements that are being done, both in our area and elsewhere through the town, to add wheelchair ramps. It just so happens that my wife had a stroke a few years ago. She's paralyzed and she's in a wheelchair. It's just by complete coincidence. So we thought it might be something relating to us when we first heard about it. But apparently this is happening throughout. So we're both anxious to hear more details about what's happening and the plan for the projects. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes public comment? Okay. If not, we went to next issue. Item on the agenda. It is Pride Month in June. And as Alice Walker said, no person should can be a friend who demands that you have your right to be who you want to be. Do we have a proclamation?
We do, Mr. Chair. The Town of Needham 2024 Pride Month Proclamation. Whereas the Town of Needham is a welcoming community and whereas Needham values the diversity of its residents and people everywhere and whereas Needham respects the contribution that each and every resident makes to our town and whereas Needham appreciates the rich tapestry of ethnic, cultural, racial, sexual, and gender identity of its residents and whereas Needham embraces our LGBTQIA+ community and whereas LGBTQIA+ youth are at especially high risk of experiencing discrimination, mistreatment, and violence. And the town is committed to ensuring that they are safe, valued, and supported. Now therefore, be it resolved that June 2024 be declared Pride Month in the Town of Needham and that all residents be encouraged to recognize and acknowledge the contributions of the LGBTQIA+ members of our community as we continue to advance the principles of liberty, equality, inclusivity, and justice for all. Signed this day, 28th of May, 2024.
Thanks. Very good. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Okay. Come to vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right. Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, we have to introduce Eliza Escheveria, Director of Administration and Finance, Public Service. Come on up, please. Karis Lustig's with us too. Director of Public Works. Welcome to Needham.
Thank you. Very happy to be here.
We met at the cookout. Yeah, it's pretty good. They were great burgers.
I didn't have one that day, but I did have a hot dog. It was delicious.
Oh, without dogs, good?
Yeah.
All right. What do you have?
Yes, I am very excited today to introduce everyone to Eliza Escheveria, who is the Director of Administration for Public Works. We sacrificed our Director of Administration or prior Director of Administration to move on to better things. And so we were very, I guess, sort of nervous and excited to recruit for this position and make sure that we had a person of the right fit. It took us a little bit of time to make sure we had somebody with the right amount of experience and ability to work independently and to work at the speed that we work out here in Needham. And we went through the process and selected Eliza. She has a pretty broad depth of experience in Public Works and in Administration that we thought would be really helpful for our organization, sort of lend an outside experience. She now joins this fairly large growing group of non-New England individuals who've applied for and received positions in the town. So we're sort of having our East Coast elitism sometimes challenged, which is which is good and bringing in new ideas. You know, right now, and you'll see in a later presentation, DPW is undertaking just a significant number of projects and that requires a lot of work on our administrative staff to make sure that where we're complying with regulatory requirements, that we're making sure that we're keeping up with all the procurements and other, you know, planning sort of objectives for the department to make the operations function as well as managing quite a significant budget, both in operating and capital. So she's been here for a month. It feels like longer, which is a good thing. And already she's helping us sort of get things organized and get ready for our summer and then also for our upcoming budget. On the fun side, Eliza recently moved to the New England area and she's a big birder. So there's no better location, I feel like, than the Public Services Administration building with our lovely trail in the back for her to be able to do that as well.
That's great. Thank you. Any committee members wish to make a comment?
I would just say welcome. So Karis absolutely knows what this role requires. And the fact that she's selected you tells me that you are going to be perfect. So we look forward to that. Excellent. But there is a lot going on and double time for everybody, I think, which is we're grateful for. Thank you.
Yes, Eliza, welcome. And I was very impressed by all your experience. I mean, in all different kinds of angles. So I think that's wonderful. And the fact that you come from a different part of the country and will give us some new ideas, also wonderful. So welcome. Wonderful to see you.
Nice to meet you, Eliza. Welcome. What brought you here from California?
My daughter. I was looking to buy a house out of state and she she attended Simmons University. She worked in a library for a lot of years and she got her undergraduate in film studies. But she was drawn to archival. She wanted to actually archive the film industry. That was so we came out here after she finished her Peace Corps. She was in the Peace Corps in Mongolia. And so she looked at Simmons University. And then when she went to Peace Corps, she came back. She goes, that's what I wanted to do. So it's like, well, I'll support you and provide you housing. So out I came. I love it here. I've always loved the Boston sort of feel and all of that. And I just kind of, I don't know. It's a good fit for me.
Good. Well, we're happy to have you and we hope you still feel that way in the winter.
Yeah, it hasn't been bad since I arrived for some reason. I don't know.
Thank you for that.
Welcome, Eliza. I think we'll have an opportunity to talk more later this week.
Oh, wonderful. Yes.
Yeah, no, I'll save my questions.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah. Congratulations for coming to Needham. That's great. In your resume, you have a variety of experiences. It's really impressive. You are a zoology major in California. So what's your favorite animal?
Panda.
Really?
Yeah, hands down panda. I did my senior project on panda studies. Just it's a solitary animal. It was endangered at the time. They've done leaps and bounds studies on all of all the pandas now that they brought into the world. And they've retracted them most recently. China has.
Right, yes.
Because China owns all the pandas. And I have very strong ties to Mexico City. And that they were the first pandas to breed outside of China. So it just is kind of exciting. And I don't know, I've always just loved those animals for whatever reason.
That's awesome. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Great. See you around town.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have a public hearing. EverSource grant of location. Do we have Joanne Callender with us?
Hi, Joanne.
Here I am.
Is she there? Hey, Joanne. Joanne, I haven't seen you in a while. Last time we did last time we did a grant of location, Mary Ann was chair. I'm chair now. I just spell my name differently. My feet are bigger, but it's basically the same thing.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So we're talking about 28 Petrini Circle. They want a grant of location to install approximately eight feet of conduit on Petrini Circle. So want to take it from there? Tell us what we have.
I love it because you do my job. So it's exactly as you said, we're seeking a grant of location to install a conduit. Eight feet of conduit into Petrini Circle. And this is to provide a new underground service to 28 Petrini Circle.
Okay. Kate Fispatschek, is everything in order?
Yes.
All right. Everything looks good. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the room that has a question? Anyone on Zoom? No? I'm getting a nod from the class. No, okay. Excellent. Then does anyone want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from EverSource Energy to install approximately eight feet of conduit in Petrini Circle.
Second.
Thank you. More discussion? Nothing? All right. We're coming to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No one's opposed. So it's unanimous.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Colleen, that's it. Joanne, thank you so much. All right. Next, we have DPW, Department of Public Works. General update. Karis Lustig returns.
So I'm here to sort of give my annual, I'll call it pre-construction season update, although I think we're pretty heavily already started into the construction season in Public Works to provide the board an update and the town an update of the projects that we're doing, primarily the projects that are focused in the public ways that people will see and may have questions on. So I'll sort of give the update and please feel free to ask many questions as I go through. Oh. So just overview of the department. We are in a much better place than we were a year ago with staffing, although we still have staffing challenges. We're down to eight vacancies. I think this time last year, we had, I think, over 15. So we've done a fairly significant job in hiring from outside. We've also had a significant number of internal promotions, which is excellent, although it does take time then to promote from within and post within the union and then get a person from outside. We have been we've undergone a program in Needham where we are training our own commercial driver's license staff. The state changed the law about a year and a half ago and required that you had to become a formal program in order to train individuals. It was largely initiated by the trucking schools because they wanted more business to their programs. But it did give us the opportunity to make our own sort of internal training program. We have two very talented individuals who are doing that process. And I think they've trained seven or eight people for their commercial driver's license already. And that's a program that if we were to outsource that, we would usually spend about $5,000 to $7,000 per individual. So it's been a huge benefit for us.
Karis, can I ask about the vacancies? Are they concentrated in any particular divisions?
Water and sewer seems to be the most challenging, which is not unique to Needham. That's sort of an industry-wide issue, particularly in New England. There are very specific licenses that are required. There are not really a lot of private sector opportunities for people to get those licensures. There's a lot of people who got into it all at the same time and they're all retiring at the same time. So that seems to be one that is just more generally challenging overall. Outside of that, it tends to be people who are retiring, people who are moving to closer to home. And the utilities in particular right now are under huge mandates in order to do a lot of piping work, which we'll sort of talk about when I talk about EverSource. And so they're heavily recruiting from municipalities, particularly utility workers. So those are sort of the staffing challenges. But for the most part, we're filling most of our higher level positions internally. And then we're hiring primarily laborers from the outside. And then those are the individuals who are getting the licenses. And then in short order, having promotional opportunities from within. So it's been spread across. But water and sewer has consistently been down, probably for the last three years.
Thank you.
We've also experienced some new challenges with some of our bidders. We've had some more particular contractors when it came to negotiating contracts, which had never really been an issue before. We're now having a challenge where people just simply aren't doing quality control when they fill out bid forms, which makes going through the process a little bit more tricky. They have errors in their bids. We then have to consult with the AG's office, with town council, to make sure that their bids will hold up. And so that can sometimes add delays into our projects, which is sort of a new challenge. We haven't had that. And I think it just has to do with the high volume of work that's occurring in the area, but particularly for municipal construction. And so they're just putting out so many bids on a regular basis. They're not really double checking the information that's on them. So that has delayed a few of our projects. Weather has sort of been a blessing as far as the construction season has started earlier, which does present challenges sometimes when we're coordinating with more people being around because it's not summertime or schools. And we do have challenges with weather as far as rain events or sort of these pop-up rain events. And we will be figuring out this summer. I think the projection right now is that it's going to be dry and hot and what kind of implications that might have. We know that the state is going to be coming out with some regulations about working in heat as far as OSHA compliance goes. And that may have some impact on our productivity over the summer. EverSource Gas never really stopped construction this year, but they have started again in earnest with several projects. I believe they have four crews right now in Needham. Again, this is to meet regulatory compliance. They are required to replace a certain volume of pipe. It's all sort of related to the gas explosion in Lawrence in North Andover. And it requires them to make sure that they're putting in the appropriate capacity and the appropriate type of pipe. So it's work that we want to facilitate, but we want to manage at the same time and make sure that they're not they're leaving our roads in good condition and that we're not running into detour kind of conflicts when we have all this construction going on. We also have approximately $6 million of ARPA projects that we need to complete this year. I think I talked to the town engineer. And overall, in this plan, you'll see about $20 million worth of projects that we're doing throughout the summer. I don't think that's ever been heard of in the town. But I do think we'll be able to complete that volume of work, which is impressive. But the added items from ARPA are certainly adding additional strain onto our resources.
And so, Karis, is that mostly water and sewer, right?
The ARPA funds are mostly water, sewer, and drainage. The we're also working on several projects that have cross-functionality with either the MBTA or Mastot. The project under Dedham Avenue right now, we're working with the MBTA because we're working technically within their right-of-way, even though it's underneath the bridge, not on their tracks. And then the 128 interceptor sewer project that was funded at town meeting also requires the MBTA. We're going to be doing some work underneath their right-of-way. The project on Dedham Ave, we are negotiating currently with Mastot. That project was on a program that they had for maintaining numbered roads. Because of some work EverSource was doing, the project ended up being delayed. And instead of having them complete the work, we're actually having them grant us the funds to do the work. The advantage is most of the projects that they do are on rural roads that don't have things like catch basin structures or crosswalks or ramps or granite curbing. So we feel we agreed with Mastot that we were better prepared to manage that type of project. So we're working with those agencies right now. And the list that I'm going to give you does not include any feasibility or design work that DPW is currently doing. And that project is fairly project list is also fairly extensive. So this is really limited to construction work that's happening in the ground this year.
Just quickly, the Dedham Ave project under are there any bumps there now? I mean, is MBTA cooperating?
We are currently working on the insurance requirements for doing work underneath their right-of-way. So we've been able to get to the permitting process. It took a little bit of time. They have their own sort of bureaucratic processes to go through. And now we're simply just trying to figure out the insurance between ourselves, our contractor, and the MBTA.
Okay. Is that added a time delay or?
It's just added time that we're not working on that particular project. And we have plenty of other curb and sidewalk projects in town. So we're just re if we can't get the permitting work completed before we're done with all of the other work on Dedham Ave, we'll send them to the other locations we're doing curb work and then we'll bring them back afterward. So we have a full season of curb and sidewalk work for our contractor. The other thing I wanted to announce, although we're not there yet, is we're working on our GIS mapping for our projects. So we should have that up and running in the next few weeks. Or we'll be mapping out all the projects that are in the right-of-way. There'll be sort of line polygons in the GIS system that shows where those projects will be with a rough estimate of when those projects will be completed. I think that will be helpful for people if they want to sort of see everything in one mapping structure and an overlay.
And where will folks have access?
That will be under the Public Works webpage. There's there'll be a project updates table. We have one now. It's just not in a map format.
Karis?
Going back for a moment to sort of Josh's question. Josh asked about really sort of the ARPA funds, I think, which are predominantly water and sewer. You said $20 million are the funds over the construction over the summer. That included the $6 million of ARPA, I think, in there. So there's another 14 million of other things that are predominantly roads? Or how do you sort of?
So when I I'll go through the list and I'll show you the ones that are the ticket items. The water main project on South Street is $9 million. So that's the probably the largest, biggest chunk. The interceptor. Okay. So we are currently putting out to bid ventilation upgrades for that facility. As you know, we're doing an RTS study as far as utilization and the services that we provide and how we provide them for solid waste and recycling. We are working right now on an RFP. We've been able to secure some additional funding to complete that study through a program with MastEP where we get some funds to promote recycling and solid waste work. It's part of sort of it's a formula grant based on the type of services that we provide. So we're able to supplement some of the funding we received at town meeting. And we should have a survey work done and ready for the fall. Usually the summer is not the best time to do the work because the number of people who are around at any given time is less. But in order to keep that building functioning, we do need to do some upgrades that were already funded to the building. That includes ventilation upgrades to the facility. The ventilation does not function the way it is designed to. And they operate equipment in there. And obviously, we have trash in there as we process it through the tipping floor. And then the tipping building itself, there was an issue. The building is structured where there is a pit. The metal that sort of surrounds the pit, the structure, has had some temporary repairs made to it. And we're going to be making some more sort of not short-term repairs, but you know, five to seven-year repairs to that to make sure that it's safe for our staff to continue operating it.
Is that what's pictured?
That's the transfer station building itself. So sort of in the back of it is where the pit is that the trash is actually dumped. And that's the structure that the staff drives, the semi-trailer underneath with the open-topped containers. On the next slide, this is probably where the vast majority of the financial resources are going to. The 128 interceptor project is being funded with ARPA. The reservoir dredging and BMP project is funded with ARPA as well as the two projects at Walker Pond. We are continuing to do work on the water quality of Walker Pond. And then we're also repairing the outfall at Walker Pond that has had some structural issues with it and requires to be fixed right now. We have a short-term solution, which does limit the amount of water that can drain out of the pond. The projects that are funded by the town are the South Street 16-inch water main. This is a section of water main that goes from Chestnut Street towards Dover. It's been very problematic as far as a breakage history goes. So it's by far not the oldest pipe in town, but it's a time in which they were transitioning materials. And the particular material that was used for the joints in this pipe has been prone to breaking and resulted in several water main breaks. And then we are finally finishing the Concorda Burnside Drainage Project. And I'll just sort of remind the board, this project started as a result of the flooding that happened in the Labor Day 2013 storms. And this is how long it has taken us to fund and complete this particular project. So this current project is around $1 million and it will finally finish the project. Unfortunately, the individuals who live at this intersection did experience flooding in 2020 because until you get the project up to that particular parcel, those bottlenecks still exist. So we'll be finishing the work on that project this year.
Karis, can I ask about the South Street water main?
Yep.
My understanding is that length of street is also a problem area for pavement.
The project will repave the road.
Will it solve some of the problems about like shifting soils in that area?
I will look into it, but we do include an overlay over every single one of our water main projects. So we'll look into that if there's a concern. On the building side, the building maintenance division is working on repainting the high school cobula. The front stairs, which are pictured here, which I know when I went there, were not in the best condition, do require repainting as this is an emergency exit for the facility. And they'll be working on that this summer. They're also working on building management upgrades. So the entire town, pretty much every building in it at this point, has a form of digital controls for all of their heating and cooling systems. Some of those, I think Needham was sort of on the forefront, which is excellent, but some of them are starting to be phased out. And so we need to upgrade them to a more modern system. So we're doing that systemically. We're starting with the library. The Elliott will be done as part of the RTU upgrade. And we'll be working through other buildings, either through projects like the Broad Meadow when we upgrade the RTUs there, or as a standalone project.
An RTU is rooftop.
Rooftop unit.
And what is BMS?
Building Management System. And then the Design and Construction Division is working with building maintenance as far as the upgrade of the rooftop units at the Elliott, which is a pretty significant project, upgrading the 20-year-old HVAC there. For Parks and Forestry, the largest project that we're doing this year is the Claxton Field project. We have a bid in hand already and we're starting the design work on that, or the pre-construction work on that project. It is primarily a soil mitigation program with a field on top of it. They'll be laying down a fairly comprehensive geotextile membrane with the support of the town's consultant who supervises us on behalf of Mast EP to ensure that we're complying. And it should close out that site at the end of the project with Mast EP. It will also result into brand-new softball fields and a multipurpose space. The two sort of smaller projects is an improvement project for the Walker Gordon infields, where we're going to be re-grading and re-sodding. And then the DeFazio fencing, which is a project that was funded this year, will be upgrading the fencing materials at that facility as well.
That was town meeting, right?
That was this town meeting. Our Water and Sewer Division is in the process of upgrading the water main at Elizabeth Circle. We do primarily do our water main work through our engineering division and we outsource contractors. But for smaller diameter water main, we've actually been using that as a teaching opportunity for all these new employees that I've mentioned, to really learn how our water system works. The vast majority of the work we do on the operations side is emergency work. And so that's not really a great time to try to teach a new employee on how to deal with service connections and gates and everything else. So it provides a really good training opportunity for our newer employees. So that's one of the projects that we're finishing up. And then we will be going in earnest in June, doing the townwide lead removal program. We can manage about $300,000 to $400,000 worth of work in a particular year. A large portion of that work this year is going to be doing some test borings to validate materials in the field. The records that we have are as good as the records that we have. So sometimes they're quite old. Sometimes people have done upgrades and they haven't filed permits. So we need to go in and validate whether or not that the material we have on record is actually the material we have in the field. That actually came up with the individual from town meeting and I communicated with them. And that is exactly what happened. We had a water main break in front of her house. And as part of that water main break, we replaced a section of water main and we replaced her lead line service. So she no longer had a lead line service. But when we did our first initial investigation, it would have indicated that she had lead in her property. So sometimes it does require a little bit of investigation. We are doing a significant amount of investigation work because we are under regulatory compliance by the end of October to have all of our lead services clearly documented and on record and available. And so that's why we're focusing on our unknown services this year to make sure that they're exactly what we think they are and they're not a different materials.
So is that card for each?
There's a sewer tie card for every single property. And again, requires that somebody pull the permit and we have all the records that are accurate. And a lot of this is still from information that was on paper.
So Karis, do you know now or will you only know in October how much of this lead is left and how long it will take to?
So we'll have a much better idea in October. I think when we looked, it was somewhere between, somewhere under 500 services. And it's, there are very few services in town that are 100% lead lined. I think there's under 10. The majority of the services that we have are lead goosenecks, which are the connection between the service and the water main. And the reason they chose lead was because it's flexible, so it moves a little bit. So that's primarily the material. The new requirements that are out now do require us to remove galvanized steel when we find it. So there's a little bit more work than we had initially anticipated because that was not part of the original requirements. But I think I had indicated the system that we are upgrading and maintaining, that we're responsible for, we can remove the lead from. But we're never going to remove lead from people's homes because it gets used in solder. It's actually used in new products, it's not only used in old products. So we will always treat the water for lead, even if we believe that we've removed all the lead in the community. And that treatment does stop the pipe from corroding and leaching lead into the water supply. So the Highway Department, we talked a little bit about the work on Dedham Avenue that is sort of maybe 25% complete at this point. We are adding a crosswalk at George Aggett as part of that construction project. And we are lowering the speed of that road to 30 miles an hour.
Right. Is there a bump out with that?
There is a handicap accessible ramp that is there that is more defined than I guess the curb line was before. I don't know if I would officially call it a bump out. But it, the crossing length, I think, is 26 feet. There is a choke point right before that, which will be the bridge. And the lanes there will be, I think, 10 and a half feet. So it will slow down traffic significantly when they actually go underneath the bridge. To get a feel for where that will be, there's a little cut in the asphalt and that's about three inches out from where the new curb line will be.
Okay.
We also have, we're almost finished with the guardrail replacement in the town. We had very picturesque picket fence guardrail that was lovely to look at, but did not provide any protection for drivers if they were to hit it. And we have put in, I guess, sort of the least objectionable option that we had, which was the Core 10 guardrail in all the locations to make the town compliant with our guardrail and make sure that our roads have adequate protection. That program's almost complete. That was helping sort of simultaneously on Dedham Ave, so there's been a lot of activity on Dedham Avenue. We also did work on Central Anne Farley Pond. I have two projects that I'll show drawings at the end of the presentation for comment. One is Webster Street and the other one is Allen Brewster. And then I have a list of all of the projects and it's pretty comprehensive. So I'll sort of just maybe go over the type of treatment that we're doing and if you have any questions about any of the specific locations. And we pick these locations and these treatments based on the town's pavement condition index. So we do an evaluation every few years. We just finished one last year of our roads. Right now it is done primarily via cameras and AI. So they drive cameras around town on the back of these vehicles. It picks up the condition of the road and that condition helps assign a value. We do inspect things that we think are kind of surprising. So we had a road that we'd recently paved and it came up with a very poor condition index. And it turned out that they had driven the road after the leaves had fallen and the leaves were perceived as cracks in the road. And so it gave it a lower ranking. So you do have to go in and do some sort of manual work, but that happens primarily automatically. And so for roads that have less deterioration, we do surface treatments. And for roads that have more deterioration, you have to do a mill and repave. Our goal in our program has been to alternate treatments as much as possible. So if we did a pave, you know, 20 years ago, we'll come in and we'll do a surface treatment. There are roads in town that have never had pavement before. They've basically just had rubber trips, chip treatments, you know, in the 70s and the 80s. So they really don't have that surface pavement. Those are the roads that we're targeting for pavement, that and more major roads. And then we use surface treatments in other locations. This year, we're actually piloting a new type of, newer type of surface treatment called a Cape Seal, which is a rubber base with a micro top and the micro is what looks like asphalt. So usually when we do a micro treatment, people wouldn't know the difference between that and asphalt. But it's very brittle. So if you put it on a surface that, surface that moves, it tends to break up. So that's why we can't use it in certain applications. But this Cape Seal, we've been told you can use on more roads that have more movement on them. And so we'll be piloting that in a few locations.
Can I ask, have you experimented with permeable surfaces at all?
We have a permeable parking lot at the Rosemary. The problem is they're highly maintenance intensive. If you don't maintain them correctly, they bind up and then they become, they start to descale. So we have not piloted them in a more broad context. I haven't seen a lot of places that have used them on the road themselves. Sometimes if you're doing like a large reconstruction, you can use them on the shoulders, but less so where there's high traffic.
Thank you.
So I mentioned sort of the surface treatments. We have paving sidewalks and then the ramps program. So we've been really trying to target compliance on ADA compliant ramps. I think there have been questions about why we have to do it. We are actually legally required to make these ramp upgrades. And it's sort of like many other legal requirements where, you know, we're supposed to do it as quickly as we can do it. We are required anywhere where we do micro-surfacing or paving to do ramps. That's a requirement. We don't have discretion. Right now, rubber chip is a surface treatment that we can use without adding an ADA compliant ramp. But it does sound like they might actually be changing that as well. So it's not oddly enough so much about the connection between the ramps that is the compliance issue. It's the ramps themselves. And the reason, I know there's a few questions we've had about ramps that pre-existed that we had to tear out. If they don't have that detectable warning panel, they're not considered ADA compliant. And that is for also helping visually impaired as well as people who are in wheelchairs. So we have two projects that we're looking to do this summer that have a little bit more of an impact than just a typical project that we just wanted to bring. The first one is Brewster Drive. And this is an intersection that was already on our paving list. And so in evaluating this, and this is sort of part of our Complete Streets policy that we have, that every time we look at a project, we want to see at that time while we're doing work, what's the, what are the gains that you can make in the project as far as walkability and multimodal? We're also looking at trying to add more permeable surface if at all possible and tighten up intersections for Complete Streets compliance. When you have a big, open intersection, people tend not to be channelized. They tend to go faster. And so tightening up intersections tends to have a positive impact on speeds. So this location was an area that we already targeting. And so that was why we evaluated it for a potential Complete Streets application. The design that you have in front of you is sort of the method in which we are going to tighten up that intersection. We have had neighborhood meetings and we are still continuing to talk to residents in the area to see what we can do in order to accommodate both the need to remove impervious surface, but also, you know, be responsive to the residents who live in the area. So we are going to continue having conversations about what we can do in the area where we're adding a significant amount of pervious surface, what type of coverings we can put in or how we can kind of differentiate and distinguish that from the home itself. But the intention is to add, to narrow the intersection, but also simply to add more pervious surface for stormwater capture as well.
Okay.
So I walked by this intersection recently and I was, I mean, I appreciate the explanation. I was surprised by how much the intersection is going to be changing. I mean, I even was thinking like, is there room for cars to turn because it's narrowing so much? But I mean, I trust that there is. I guess one of the things that was surprising is that, because this isn't a well-traveled area, I was surprised that the resources were going here rather than another location in town. But no, I appreciate the explanation.
Yeah. This reminds me of on Great Plains, the turn by Wyoming or Bo, is Wyoming, right? Both are in Birds Hill.
The bounce corner, is that what you were going to?
Yeah, the intersection of death. And I think this seems much like a, I couldn't believe, that's on Carroll to Brewster, that's a huge turn. I think you could do another quarter mile of sidewalks with the amount of asphalt that's on there. I think it just, I think it's, I think it's for use to put more, more permeable surface. If it's going to be safer for the cars, there's the question of what would you do? What would you plant there that'd be easily maintained and what could the town maintain?
So we sort of talked about a few different ideas. So one idea is we could actually leave the existing sidewalk where it is and sort of create like a little pocket park type aesthetic. And then the question is, what do you put there? We've been experimenting with a few different ground covers that are not grass. They've been experimenting with micro clover and some type of creeping thyme that you can use as a ground cover. And then there's also the question of, do you, instead of putting sort of an organic cover there, do you put in some sort of rain garden rock kind of treatment there that would be both low maintenance but also pervious? So I think there's a few different options that we could try to look at for that particular area. So I think the question is, what do you plant there? Who maintains it? What do you want to have there and do you try to separate it from the property or not?
We have a few examples of this around town, though, where it's been handled successfully. And I'm thinking it's, I'm not sure if, this is the intersection that you just mentioned, but like at the bend in Great Plains?
Yeah. Was that Washington Street near Washington in, yeah?
Where the sidewalk goes through sort of what looks like somebody's lawn, but the other side of the sidewalk is town.
Okay. Great.
All right, but if you move the sidewalk or kept the sidewalk where it is, how does it connect to the crosswalk?
Sorry, so we'd have two sidewalks. So we would keep the sidewalk where it is and then we'd add another sidewalk around it.
Okay.
Doesn't help with permeable surfaces much, I guess.
Well, there's a little bit less because you're not moving that five feet.
Yeah.
Does, does this area all have sidewalk on both sides of the street right now?
It does currently.
I'm just curious if the Mobility Planning Committee, if they had standards for sidewalks, would this be a neighborhood that would have sidewalks on both sides of the street? I probably, so I, I mean, the question in my mind is, is that the right investment here versus somewhere else? And if there were not sidewalks on both sides, what would that mean? Just.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, I walk in this neighborhood a lot and it, I really do appreciate the sidewalks. And especially even along Alden, all the way along Alden, the handicapper racks are being put, I should say ramps are being put in because there are none. Like at every other intersection, there are no ramps. So it's really appreciated at all the other intersections. This, this one, the only thing that's different is like the size of the intersection. I have no objection to the sidewalks and crosswalks. Just looking at, because it's so big, would this be a candidate for a traffic circle maybe?
Certainly something we could talk about. I think, I'd have to look at the dimensions of where we have an opportunity to put it in. I think a normal round traffic circle, probably not. It would have to be some other configuration because it's just not a cross, a 90-degree cross-section.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hey, across the street there, what are those neighbors getting? Their driveways are extended double or?
The existing driveways are just being extended.
Okay. Okay, and then they, okay, I understand.
And actually kind of moved out of the intersection if you look at it.
Oh yeah, right. That's probably safer. Okay. I mean, my only thought is, if it's easy to maintain, if the town can maintain it satisfactorily.
I think that the point is that we're not in a position to mow corners, right? So that Karis is looking to try to find something that we, we're not going to be able to mow it. You know, like it's like the berm.
Something low maintenance.
We require, you know, we rely on residents. But how many square feet is that, do you know, Karis?
Not off the top of my head.
It is, it is a big change. I get that.
Okay. If the sidewalks on the remained, that would effectively become a pocket park.
Basically.
So that's Park and Forestry, right?
I'm going to say we don't have the resources to mow a pocket park. I'm going to stand right up for you, Karis. That, that small a pocket park, maybe.
All right.
The next project is much larger in scope and on a much more traveled road. We know they've already had neighborhood meetings that are with the neighbors that are going to be the most impacted by this type of work. But it's hard not to notice that Webster Street has been dug up for the last two years by Eversource as they do a main project. As part of that project, they transition funds over to the town and that they would have been reserved for an overlay. And it was their preference and I think also our preference that they gifted those funds to the town as opposed to doing the overlay themselves. And it gives us the opportunity to do some surface treatments and some traffic calming work that I think has been looked for, particularly on Webster Street. The changes that are here, for the most part, you will see are in paint. There's a few that are more horizontal. So if you start on page one, these are actually, the darker lines are going to be raised speed tables that are there. So you'll have a raised crosswalk that will be, you know, in closer proximity to the school to try to create that sort of additional traffic calming area right in front of the school. You'll see that we are adding accessible ramps, which we do not have on the vast majority of Webster Street. And you'll see that we are painting shoulder lines across Webster Street as well. Webster Street unfortunately is too narrow to add a full bike lane. We do not sign something as a bike lane unless it is five feet. That doesn't mean that you might not have a four-feet shoulder. And one of the treatments we've been doing, you probably saw before, shoulders would wrap around a corner. So you'd see a physical paint line that would sort of wrap around. So we're not calling it a bike lane, but we are also not wrapping the paint around anymore and we're just stopping it. So it has the appearance of someone continuing on as opposing to need to stop. So it has sort of a protective effect, even though it's not technically compliant with a bike lane requirement.
So what's the lane, what would you make, paint the lane?
They're 10 and a half feet.
All right.
So is that negotiable?
The width?
Yeah.
So that is, like, we have to get these stamped by our engineers. And I think 10 and a half is sort of where they felt comfortable with on this road. We are piloting two roads right now, I think at nine feet. We're piloting High Rock and we're piloting Maple or Oak, I can't remember. I think it's Oak Street. And we're doing some traffic studies and before and after speed analysis to kind of see, does it have an impact or not? I can certainly go back to the engineers. We, we do have a third-party engineer help us validate the widths just because we are making a change that sort of deviates from normal standard to make sure they're stamping off on it. But we could certainly bring that up with them.
So what's the width right now?
Probably 12 feet, I would think that's what was our standard.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I'm just, from what I've heard, I'm not, you know, obviously you're the professional, but I've heard that 10 is just, so for, for traffic calming, going to make a big difference.
So Mast dot right now is saying 11 for the number of vehicles that we have per day as far as like their compliance with their regulations. But they don't necessarily always agree with each other because they have a Complete Streets division and they have engineers and they don't always necessarily see eye to eye. It's come down. It didn't, it used to be 11. It used to be 12 was the standard. And we can certainly take a look at it. One of the other things you can do is use a wider paint application. So right now we have a four-foot. So right now we have a four-foot standard, but you can do a six, sorry, a four-inch standard, but you can do a six-inch standard, which effectively narrows it two inches on either side as another opportunity to sort of not necessarily narrow the lane, but increase the paint surface.
Right. And since we don't have a bike lane, but we have wider shoulder, that would add an element of protection.
It would have a wider stripe.
Oh, you come.
So when we were at the public meeting, we originally proposed 11-foot lanes here. The public did ask us to take that down to 10-foot lanes. But after we took a secondary look at it with our engineering team and the third-party engineers, we decided 10 and a half foot lanes were appropriate there. Main reason for that decision was because there's a tremendous amount of truck, truck traffic that bypasses Highland and uses Webster instead. And we didn't want to go down to 10 feet because the trucks would be crossing over the center line if we were to do that. So that was one of the decisions of why we compromised at the 10 and a half feet as opposed to the 10 feet in that section in front of the high school.
And will trucks be compatible with the speed tables?
Yes.
Karis, Shane, so I was going to say thank you because 10 and a half to me, I knew was a different number than what we heard before. So I appreciate going narrower. One of the other things that, that I just think about is when we striped the bike lane on Greendale, right? We striped the bike lane a fixed distance from the side and the width of the lane varies. I would hope we would get to a practice where the width of the lane is a fixed size and the bike lane could be wider, you know, than the, than the range. So they're actually safer. It feels like that would be a safer treatment for the bike lane, just as a practice. I don't know what that means on this street as you go different places on the street, but to the extent that we can preserve more spaces for a bike, I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
This, I, I do think it's kind of a missed opportunity not to have a crosswalk at Brookline across Webster. I remember when we had our, the neighborhood meeting, many people were crossing at that location. I think it's just a natural place to cross. And if, if people are crossing there, I, I want to make it safe. And I, I know there's like the argument, like, you know, how do you induce people to do things differently versus when do you accept people's behavior and make that behavior safe? And I feel like this is a case where people are going to cross it at Brookline.
And I'm going to say I support the not putting it in at Brookline. You know, it's so interesting because, because I do understand that we saw people that day who were doing that and then running up, up the hill, right? Which also doesn't have a cross location because they could see people standing in the parking lot. But the fact is that the entrances are not at Brookline, right? It doesn't get you in there. And so it's, it's a complicated thing. I, I know the other engineering factors are trying to encourage people to go in at the entrances. It's going to be, no matter what we do, people are going to be crossing all over there.
I would also add that it's a paint application as opposed to something that's more permanent. So it's not like you, it's sometimes easier to not put it in and add it in later than it is to take away something that's already there. Just blacking out pavement markings just never, it's very obvious that you've blacked out pavement. So it doesn't preclude the opportunity in the future if needed.
I remember that came up at the meeting on April 9th. And a lot of people wanted it, but I think, and there's something makes sense about it. Except on school days, there's traffic, crossing guards at two crosswalks. And I wonder, they couldn't do a third?
You'd need more crossing guards.
In preliminary conversations with the police department, that was one of their concerns is that if we were to put a crosswalk there, that they couldn't cover that crosswalk. So they requested that we keep the two crosswalks where they are currently because that will funnel the kids to where we want them to go, which is where police officers are to, to channel that traffic and the Peds. Again, that's not going to stop people from crossing wherever they decide to cross, but at least we're funneling them to where we feel is the safest locations to cross.
Yeah, I would just add, I mean, you, where you end up on Brookline is that little hill and then you're walking between cars and then you're going to get hit by all the people dropping off. Like that is not, you're going to end up at one of the entrances anyway. So you have to walk, you know, you're not going to run up that hill. So, you know, the fact that you have to walk to the right or the left on this side of Webster before you cross, I don't know. You don't want them running up that hill and in between the cars and into, into the drop-off lane.
We did something similar on Harris when we redid that intersection. And I think sometimes also when you make the sidewalks feel more, the crosswalks that are there, we added a refuge islands there. I think when you make them feel more comfortable, people are more inclined to walk the extra distance to get there. Whereas, I mean, I witnessed the drop-off pickup there and I think it's been much more successful since we've added sort of the similar situation, sort of the bookended. I do know one of the conversations that came up was like a fence or a knot fence. We did end up ending a fence at the Pollard because it's all at grave there. So that's also something that we could look into in the future.
Can this be reviewed in the fall, once it's in place, to see whether we need a crosswalk at Brookline?
Yeah, I think, this M L Brookline that just, this conversation won't happen again.
And this is one of the first steps ultimately for a safety zone. So we're looking at, we recommend a safety zone to be put in this location. But there's certain steps we as a town have to take to show to the state that we've mitigated and made things safer. So this is just the first steps in working our way towards ultimately a safety zone in that area.
Yeah, I would also just point out that we were there off hours. So there wasn't a whole lot of traffic, there wasn't a whole lot of activity on the site. I think, you know, before school and after school, it's a zoo. And I have to say, I live right off of this area and, you know, the tragedy a few years ago, like driving down that strip, it, it's a, it's a game of Frogger already. And how, and adding another crosswalk just feels really nerve-wracking. Like it feels overstimulating for a driver to, to get through there. I guess my preference, although I, I remember that there was not a lot of enthusiasm for a fence and I agree that it doesn't look great, but I think the fence that was put up at Pollard, that short amount of fence was, helped to divert kids to the crosswalks. And so, I don't know, I would be in favor of trying to divert from Brookline because there's just so much activity there already during those crazy, busy periods. It just feels too chaotic.
I'm thinking about it more from a pedestrian standpoint, like.
But even from a pedestrian standpoint, they're, I mean, it's all part of the ecosystem. If they're trying to cross, it's just, it's too nuts. I mean, sometimes, I get it, it's the path of least resistance, but sometimes it's not, still not the best, safest path.
If people are going to do something, I think we need to make that behavior safe.
Right, but if they can't, if they cross the street and then they can't run up the hill because there's a fence there, maybe they won't do that. I mean, I just think we have to look at all the options.
And then the second sort of page has sort of the remaining, remainder of Webster. Just wanted to emphasize everything on this is in paint. So we're talking about adding some torpedo islands and other traffic calming measures. I think if they're successful, we may come back and with a proposal later on that has something more permanent or more three-dimensional for traffic calming.
And this is something else that came out of the neighborhood meeting. One of the concerns was that if we were going to choke that area down before the high school, that the approaches on both sides would become speed areas because people are frustrated now they want to gain that, that back. So what we did is we asked our consultant to go back and take a look at doing these torpedo islands in the pavement markings. So by doing this, it'll visually narrow those lanes down as well and visually force people to slow down because now they'll, they'll take a look at it and they'll be double yellow, so they're not allowed to drive on those anyway.
Oh, so that will narrow the, the lane from the interior.
So what we do in this section here, as you can see, rather than the four-foot shoulders, those shoulders become narrower in that section. And then the lanes will still be that 10 and a half foot lanes, but we just gain it by doing the torpedo island. So we make up the difference with the shoulders versus the center line.
I get it. I get it, but I'm kind of wondering if we are making our shoulders, not bike lanes, shoulders narrower, are we now endangering, I mean, it's going to be harder to ride a bike at this point.
They'll share the lane in those, in those cases. Part of the reason too is that in that area, we don't, at this time, we don't, from an engineering perspective, we don't recommend that be bike lanes.
Right. No, no, I get it can't be, but I, if they can have a bike lane, I'd like at least a wider shoulder.
You'd actually rather see people than ride a bike down Manning would be the recommendation? Is that really what we're suggesting?
Manning's tricky too, you know?
It's got different issues, but that's what I just, I'm thinking about what, what is our bike recommendation in that area?
Well, maybe once we have a bike recommendation, we could post like a bike lane sign, like a bike route signs so that people can understand that they're not supposed to drive on the street.
Oftentimes the shoulder, when we mark these shoulders out, oftentimes the shoulders are marked out at the five feet. So they become de facto bike lanes, not official bike lanes. So what this will also do for us is it will discourage people from using it as a de facto bike lane in that area where we don't feel like it's safe. So there's, you know, unfortunately, just like any other project, some things have to give over other things to make it safer. And our main concern here is slowing the traffic down in this section, especially to make it more Peds, Ped-friendly. So that was one of those things. And, and so of course, the bike lanes or dedicated bike lanes were part of the sacrifice for that section. But again, this is all paint, so this doesn't mean that later DPW couldn't come back in there and do some modification with curb lines and put some official bike lanes in there.
Yeah, I still would err on a wider shoulder. It's not necessarily bicyclists, but I've noticed that when people go running, especially in the winter after there's a nice bit of ice everywhere, they all run in the road. It'd be really nice if to keep them, I mean, somewhere at least make it safer for all the runners to, and walk. Okay.
The safest though is the traffic going really slow.
That's true.
Yeah. Yeah, if the traffic is slower, that's safer for the bikers and the walkers. You know, you give the bikers an extra foot, but then the traffic is whizzing right past them. That is also not so safe.
I have a question, if kids are biking to the high school, what's the suggested route?
We can get back to you on that.
Yeah. Anthony Webster.
I should have the Mobility Planning Coordination Committee is currently working with the MAPC to scope out a overall town transportation plan. And as part of that, we're hoping to look at all the different modalities, how they can sort of transport through town. And then also what are our standards? So how do we label our roads and, you know, differentiate them? We have sort of a system, but it's 30 years old and it doesn't really reflect how roads are currently being utilized. So I think that's sort of like the precursors to kind of coming up with like a biking plan or pedestrian plan or even like a truck, truck traffic plan is sort of figuring that out. So we're sort of in the early stages of that.
All right. And I'm sorry. Okay, I got it, where we are.
And then just the very point where the island ends.
How wide is the shoulder there, Karis? I just can't read it.
I don't have the large plans in front of me, but I can certainly.
I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and the, the listing that you did at the neighborhood session. So thank you for that. I do think this is an improvement over what we saw before. I think it raises some other questions, but I think it's really a step forward.
Can I ask, at the meeting, there's discussion about a rectangular flashing beacon? Is that still part of the plan?
No, we pulled out there a rectangular flashing beacon at Rosemary. We're still doing the bump out, engineering took a second look at that because we did have some opposition on it. And engineering felt that it was still safe to place the crosswalk there because we're doing the bump outs there. So the crosswalk will still remain, the bump out will still remain there to choke the traffic down on Rosemary as they take that left off of Webster onto Rosemary to force the traffic to slow down and the cars will slow down there on Rosemary. And engineering felt that, that it would still be safe for the pedestrians across there without the R R F B. But we do have the ability that if we find there's issues there to go back in later and install the R R F B.
That's really interesting, I like that. It did bring up side conversation, not for today. But Rosemary Street is a pedestrian purgatory. I wasn't going to say hell. But it's a, there's, the sidewalk stops, it's, you know, it's kind of a weird.
Changes sides.
Changes sides.
And just back to the other side.
Yes. It's on the list, right?
It's on the list. One other thing I just wanted to add that isn't on here, but we did talk about at town meeting, Mark Tree being one of the projects that we're funding with our Chapter 90 funds. We have some preliminary designs not ready yet to bring to the board. But on, sort of knew this was going to happen, many of the, all of the possible designs that we have do have some questions about the location of trees in order to make sidewalks compliant and the roadway compliant with. It has to do with poles, which is just more of an administrative issue than it is a, you know, an aesthetic issue. But I'm just knowing the sensitivity around it, I just sort of wanted to sort of put that seed out there that there may be some conflict between safe sidewalks, safe roads and the trees that are currently in the right-of-way at Mark Tree. We've challenged the designer to try to save as many trees as possible, but that, that's an old road that wasn't really designed for modern usage. And so they're trying to figure out how to bring it up to, to our requirements, including not adding sidewalk. And, and still we're looking at what trees can, can remain and which trees may need to come down as part of that project. So I just wanted to put that there because I know it's, it's a hard balance to strike.
What's the timeline for that project?
We're in design phases now. I don't think we'd be starting, we wouldn't be putting anything out to bid until next winter at the earliest and construction next year.
Okay.
I think my, my follow-on question would be, all that can be true, would they also provide requirements on where they might suggest putting trees in? You know, where do they think their best prospects are?
Yes, that, that's part of it. We have a, I think it's a two-for-one tree removal policy. So every tree that comes down, we put up two.
They want big trees. And I can be agreeable, like a linen tree or a basswood tree, either one's fine. Both is enough. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
This has been great, it really is. You did a lot of work. You have a very busy summer.
Our, we will have a.
Yes. Rin it.
You're in it. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the appointments and consent to Jenna.
All right, great discussion.
Yes, we need to delete the April 16th.
Yes. We will delete the April 16th minutes because they were not included in the pack. Otherwise our revisions are fine and a minute should be accurate, right?
I think there were a couple minor revisions, right?
They've been handed out, yeah.
Have they?
Yeah. Those were corrected.
Oh. Yeah, I, yeah, don't worry.
So, with the exception of the April 16th minutes.
Okay. Great, any others? Still seconded? Okay, we're still going to vote then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, all right. Next, we have the town manager's report.
Just have a few items. One of the things that the board had been working on is a celebration and observance of the Juneteenth holiday. And we haven't quite got that committee constituted yet, but we will be having a, a small ceremony observing on, on Juneteenth, June 19th in the 9:30 range. And we will be providing, you know, sample agenda on that. So I just wanted to make sure everybody had that on the calendar if they can go. And we'll be letting the public know that we'll be there. So Town Hall will be closed because public buildings are required to be closed on Juneteenth. But we'll have that celebration.
Well, I like it, thank you.
The Needham Line is undergoing some track improvements. And so there will be busing. We will be having buses in the community this weekend, the first and second, the eighth and ninth, and then from the 28th to July 1st. So the exact location of the buses is generally speaking, the bus stop for the 59 bus, but there are a couple places where the bus doesn't go. there are a couple places where the bus doesn't go. For instance, at Hersi, where the police chief is working with the MBTA to make sure that it's, you know, the best possible solution. So, and then under the police powers, they'll post them as no parking for those couple of days. It should be, you know, particularly some of these particularly quiet weeks.
Safer, quieter Needham said. It's like, it's like a quiet song.
It's like a sampler.
Do we know the route of that replacement service?
The bus?
Yeah.
Yes, I can get it to you. Yeah, it would run essentially along, from Newton Highlands to Rubbles, I think. So yeah, I have a pocket. I have to consult my notes from Gabby on the next one. So, our, as we like to say, our Gabby, she has worked with a lot of people, but has submitted a funding proposal to Congressman Akaklos's office. So it was $3 million for federal funding to support small-scale, cost-effective stormwater best management practices like rain gardens, permeable pavement, constructed wetlands, and those kinds of things throughout town, to support flood reduction efforts and to reduce our phosphorus load, so both of the quality and the quantity. Congressman Akaklos put that in his package, and so it is now before House Appropriations. So we're very lucky to have been selected. That's a big congressional district and it's a lot of money. So we just keep, keep working away on that, but that, we're just grateful that we're in that queue, so, so that's exciting. And the last thing I just wanted to note was, the International City County Management Association runs a program called Credential Managers, and there's a credential advisory board, which conveniently I sit on. But it is the premier designation, a credential manager, premier designation for our, for city managers, or most people in the country are city managers, but town managers and town administrators. And today we learned that Katie King, our deputy town manager, has been granted credential manager candidate status. So we're very excited, so yay! Going to end with the good news.
Congratulations. That's great.
I'm just going to say, of course she has.
Right. Yeah, that's great. Okay. Next, we have board discussion, committee reports. What do you got? Mary? Kathy?
Well, Minuteman.
Oh, Minuteman, yes. He did do that. And Needham... Was that last week? Was that last week? It was since our, I think it was since our last...
You could be right. Yeah, Minuteman.
And Needham has 20 students joining the freshman class at Minuteman in the fall, which is good. Our slots are 15, and so we're getting a lot of students going in there. They have a new superintendent, superintendent starting July 1st. Anything you would add? I don't think so. So I think the things that are important to recognize is that what we heard from the Minuteman team is that we continue to do an excellent job of working and partnering with them. And they have a couple more ideas of some things they can do next year to help students understand about the Minuteman offering. Historically, there's been a conflict so that the Pollard has had, you know, the class field trip that was out of town on the same day as the Minuteman Showcase Day, which meant that Minuteman always very helpfully created an additional day just for our students. But it meant that our students didn't ever get the sense of other students who might be there as well, and they lost that opportunity. So, starting next year, we'll be back in sync with their regular program and people will actually get a sense of other students coming from other communities and who else they might see there. So I think that that's going to be beneficial again. But we, we continue to work, we continue to pay Minuteman more money because we are sending more students. But the students that we are sending are students for whom we think this is a terrific opportunity. And the Minuteman students are going to all kinds of amazing places, both trades and colleges, with the skills that they're acquiring there. So, good thing.
Good question. My understanding is that the capacity at Minuteman is already nearing or at capacity?
So there's still a number of out-of-district students, and I'm not looking at the number, but Kathy's, Kathy's got it pulled up, out-of-district students that are there, all right? At some point, the anticipation is that in-district enrollment means that no more students from out-of-district will be able to attend. We are not there yet.
But for Needham residents, if they want to go, they're guaranteed a spot still, right?
They always go to the top of the line. And I'm just looking at, the numbers that they gave us for out-of-district are roughly 20 from, you know, like 10 different towns. But even if, let's say a Needham applicant applies really late, they still, they'll bump someone. They go to the top of the line.
In out-of-district, they pay full freight, right?
Out-of-district pay full freight and pay a capital assessment fee. So that was one of the major pieces that we were successful in winning when the new arrangement was set up for the new school. So, yep.
That's great. Excellent.
It used to be a bargain to go from out-of-district. That is no longer true. They pay, they share in capital costs.
Yeah.
They continue, well, the other thing I will say is they continue to work on their fields. They are hopeful of coming to an arrangement with Leslie University, where Leslie would use their fields and would pay them in such a way that it would help with the construction of stands for, you know, spectators for sports and things like that, and let them construct that. They've been working on this for about a year. It hasn't come to fruition yet, but they remain optimistic that that may come to pass.
Leslie College in Cambridge.
In Cambridge. They have no access to fields, and this looks like a place where they might be able to get access. The times are offset from each other, so there's not a collision in times between the two entities. And so it might be advantageous.
Okay. I can imagine the coaches to be like, okay, guys, fun to practice.
That I don't think will occur, but yeah.
Tough work. Okay. Anything else?
My office hours are Saturday, June 8th, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. in this room.
Okay. Was that again, Saturday?
Saturday, June 8th, from 1:00 to 2:00. And that's right before the Civic Showcase, which is in Powers Hall.
Thank you for bringing that up.
I went to the Icon event, the holy celebration for the Indian community of Needham, some time ago. I don't have any sense of where we are in time anymore. But it was fantastic, and the crowd was so friendly and I got to dance with a tambourine, ate awesome food, and met awesome people, and it was, it was really fun. And, and I, I encourage everyone to go next year because it was really enjoyable.
Got covered, right?
Oh, yeah, right. And covered with all kinds of colors, and it was superb. And my car was very messy. Yeah. No, it was fantastic, and I appreciate the very warm welcome that they gave me when I was there, so.
That's great. Awesome. Okay. Memorial Day was yesterday. Guys, we did great. Thank you. It was a good event. It was a long, it was a long day, but it was heartfelt and it was great. It's interesting to see, I, all the support for, for our military that was, you know, it was good to see. And I think there was a student from St. Sebastian's, he's going West Point, he spoke. And then I was there, Lily Schmaltz is there, she's going Navy. So I was like, oh, okay. It's like, there are a lot. Also, CAPC, Climate Action Plan Committee is having a forum on June 5th, 6 o'clock, Powers Hall. Everyone wants to be there, so we'll try. It'll be great. We've got to talk all things climate change. And then the Brand and Seal Committee is moving along. We're getting traction. We're having some great conversations about creating a brand icon for the town. That'll be coming along. I think the timeline is...
We may have something to share in June, I think, for the, for the brand.
Yeah.
Seal later, yeah.
But it'll be coming along, and you guys will of course have to vote, make decisions, so get your voting ready. But it's all very good.
Can I just say that I'm so excited for this because every time I see another Big Belly with the town seal on it, I just want to cringe. So, not a place for a seal, very excited that we would have a brand that could be used in a place like that.
Yes, right. It's multipurpose. Okay.
You have a dedicated group of volunteers debating blue shades, shades of blue, I should say.
Yes, yeah.
Didn't we already have a shade of blue? No?
Oh, no, no, Marianne, it's very complicated. I mean, you might think, okay? Everything gets considered. I worked for a place, a textbook company, and they said redesign by the square inch, and that's no joke.
This is a great committee, though.
I will be happy to have a considered blue and to know what that standard is, yes.
All right. Excellent. Otherwise, I'm out of talking. Anyone else have anything?
Mr. Chair, I move for adjournment.
I second.
All right. There's people in a rush. All right. Any discussion? Okay, we'll have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We're adjourned.